Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counsel Linahan.
Counsel Lamatina.
Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you.
Counsel Linahan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey. And Counselor Zakim. Mr. President, we have a forum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise. I will ask Counsel Yancey to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. And after the invocation is delivered, I would ask that all members and guests remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Yancey, you have the podium.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. I have the honor and privilege of presenting to our colleagues for the first time, at least in the last 31 years, to have a spiritual leader of the Hindu faith. So I am introducing Padma Singh, who does a lot of work for the community. She's actually a phrenomalous for the, at Conny Hospital, and she's an EKG technician by profession. But she is our spiritual leader for the Hindu religion within the city of Boston. One of the things that we are attempting to do before the close of calendar year 2015 is to find a respectable home so we can have a Hindu temple within the city of Boston as well. So it's in that context, I invite the head of Shri Lakshmi Mandir of Boston, Padma Singh, to offer our invocation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Master of ceremony. Members of this assembly. Members of the city council. Representative of all various religious backgrounds. And my humble members of this assembly. Sitaram, namaste. My name, as Governor Yancey said, is Padma Singh, and I'm a member of the Sri Lakshmi Mandir of Boston. I take this honor and privilege to be among these souls, distinguished souls here tonight. Well, today, sorry. And giving this opportunity, as we start this new year, I am pretty sure with the counselors, they will do a pretty good job in making this year a better one than the previous one. With these few words, I'll start and end my prayers with Om, which is the mystical syllable of Hinduism. Please join me in prayers as we ask God to stimulate and illuminate our souls. Om Shri Ganesha Namaha. Om Asatoma Saragamaya. Om Tamasoma Jotirgamaya. Om Asatoma Saragamaya. Haryom Shanti Shanti Haryo. Oh, Lord, lead us from the path of untruth to the path of truth. Lead us from the path of darkness and ignorance to the path of light and knowledge. And lead us from death unto immortality. Let peace prevail everywhere, oh Lord. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. Thank you.
Thank you, Padma Singh, for your inspiring message and prayer. At this time, Counselor Yancey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For liberty and justice.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey, and thank you, Padma Singh, for being here with us today.
Thank you.
At this, at this time, I would like to call on a, someone who we all know very well, Bill Brett. Would you please come up here? Bill Brett is a well-known, award-winning photographer for the Boston Globe. And each of you have either with you or have received a, an inscribed book of his most recent photography, which is, I have here, I'll present. Boston Irish, it's his fifth book that he's published. Bill, why don't you come up here? Because most of the content is right in the proclamation. Okay? And I have a copy of it, so I'm going to present you the copy. All right? Many of you all know Bill, Bill Brett. You've seen him at many events throughout your political careers and in, in your activism or in your neighborhoods. Presenting and photograph what we as a people are here in Boston. So today, whereas the Boston City Council extends their thank you and congratulations to Bill Brett for his 50 years of commitment and publishing within the Boston Globe. Whereas just 18-year-old Bill Brett started as a part-time photographer at the Globe, capturing photos in his hometown of Dorchester, Mass. Bill's time at the Globe has been filled with success and accomplishment during his position as chief photographer at the Globe. The Globe team was nominated for the Pulitzer Prize for Journalism in '78 and '79. In addition to this success, under Bill's leadership, Stan Grusfeld won two Pulitzer Prizes ever awarded the Boston Globe staff. Bill later became Director of Photography, a position he held until his retirement in 2001. But Bill has continued to publish on a regular basis his photography in the Boston Globe. And so Bill started with the Globe back in 1965, this month, January. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's very active in journalism. He publishes weekly, The Party Lines, Boston All in One Family. I mentioned the, the five books. Whereas Bill has said, "I love what I do, and I love this city. I feel that I have a front row seat in history, even as I preserve that history for Boston throughout my photos." Along with capturing this history, Bill has used his work to help raise awareness and donations to many organizations across the city. And the Boston City Council collectively commends you on your success and contribution and dedication. And in, in this particular book, he had captured all of us at the inauguration in 2014 of the mayor and for men for their swearing-in to the Boston City Council. So we are part of that history. He's done an extraordinary job. He's been a friend of, known the Brett family for nearly my entire life. So dare it be resolved that the Boston City Council, in meeting assembled, does hereby wholeheartedly congratulate and thank Bill Brett for his many years of dedication and commitment to photography and journalism, and declares today, Wednesday, January 14, 2015, Bill Brett Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you very much. This is a very unusual spot for me to be, since I have photographed many, many people standing here. I never thought that I'd be standing here today, but it is an honor. But for me to accept this on behalf of my family also, is that Boston is a great city, and I've had the opportunity to photograph every part of this city and a lot of people in the city. And this last book that I have done, it's a, it's dedicated to my mother. My mother was an immigrant from Ireland, and she came to this country, and she raised six of us, and she did a wonderful job. And I was trying to show in this book, there's men and women who've made a great contribution to this city. And the way the immigration laws are changing today, there's less and less Irish that are coming to the city. And I feel that these men and women, in this particular book, are ready to help the next group of immigrants, whoever they are, what country they're from. Because they were helped when they came, and now it's just passing the baton on to the next group of people. And it's an honor for me to, to, to do this book, because I felt I was the person to do it, since I have photographed so many of these people in my career. I did the first wife, second wife, girlfriends, boyfriends. So I get to know who, who was on first. And it gave me an opportunity to put this all together, because I felt that this book will be a piece of history to go along with these other books that I have done on people of Boston. And for me, it was an honor, and I hope I can continue this for another book on another group of people as the city changes. And again, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank Billy, and I want to thank all the members of the council and the people of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, for those kind words. It's really, it's an honor for all of us to recognize your achievement, commitment, and your presentation of our great city and all the people who, who have contributed, not just this book, but all of the books, in all five published books that you have. I'd like to ask the council members to come up and take a group photo with Bill Brett. And I'm glad that I was able to, to have the opportunity to give each one of you the book, and that Bill would come and join us and sign, sign it on his 50th anniversary of publishing in the city of Boston. So, that's Charles's book.
Yeah, he gets the whole book. Well, Charles and I go way back.
I'm sure.
1979. Why don't we hold it? Yeah. Look tall enough, Harry?
I do.
He's in Florida.
Thank you very much. This is a very unusual spot for me to be, since I have photographed many, many people standing here. I never thought that I'd be standing here today, but it is an honor. But for me to accept this on behalf of my family also, is that Boston is a great city, and I've had the opportunity to photograph every part of this city and a lot of people in the city. And this last book that I have done, it's a, it's dedicated to my mother. My mother was an immigrant from Ireland, and she came to this country, and she raised six of us, and she did a wonderful job. And I was trying to show in this book, there's men and women who've made a great contribution to this city. And the way the immigration laws are changing today, there's less and less Irish that are coming to the city. And I feel that these men and women, in this particular book, are ready to help the next group of immigrants, whoever they are, what country they're from. Because they were helped when they came, and now it's just passing the baton on to the next group of people. And it's an honor for me to, to, to do this book, because I felt I was the person to do it, since I have photographed so many of these people in my career. I did the first wife, second wife, girlfriends, boyfriends. So I get to know who, who was on first. And it gave me an opportunity to put this all together, because I felt that this book will be a piece of history to go along with these other books that I have done on people of Boston. And for me, it was an honor, and I hope I can continue this for another book on another group of people as the city changes. And again, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank Billy, and I want to thank all the members of the council and the people of the city. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bill, for those kind words. It's really, it's an honor for all of us to recognize your achievement, commitment, and your presentation of our great city and all the people who, who have contributed, not just this book, but all of the books, in all five published books that you have. I'd like to ask the council members to come up and take a group photo with Bill Brett. And I'm glad that I was able to, to have the opportunity to give each one of you the book, and that Bill would come and join us and sign, sign it on his 50th anniversary of publishing in the city of Boston. So, that's Charles's book. He gets the book.
Yeah, he gets the whole book. Charles and I go way back.
I'm sure.
1979. Why don't we hold it? Yeah. Oh, I know. Does it look tall enough, Harry?
I do.
I know.
Half expecting to see Jimmy.
He's in Florida.
Thank you very much, and let's give Bill a big hand for his accomplishment. At this time, I'd like to invite Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty would like to make a presentation regarding WCEATV, Spanish Broadcasting in, in the region. And Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the high honor on behalf of all of us to invite, who I know is Pedro Nicholas Quenca, who I know as Peter Quenca, to the dais for a brief presentation. Very much like the Irish and their great contributions to our city, the Latino community here in Boston has made great contributions, not only to our city, to our state, but to our country. And one of the conduits to that great work and great success has been Peter Quenca. So I'll read you some of the short references here that are listed from the full citation. Reads as follows. "WCEATV Quenca Vision was established in 1986 by Pedro Nicholas Quenca as the first Spanish-language TV in Massachusetts. WCEATV Quenca Vision is the first Latino-owned and-operated TV station in New England. This channel celebrates the rich diversity of our city and shares a vibrant blend of ethnic and multilingual content. Quenca Vision serves as an activist catalyst for community service, helping individuals and organizations promote local initiatives and charitable causes. Quenca Vision encourages political participation and has held many successful vote-a-thons to increase voter turnout on election days. On January 6th of 2015, Quenca Vision added 22 cities to their broadcast area, including Andover, Belmont, Somerville, Salem, Wakefield, Lynn, Lawrence, and others, which now represents over 300,000 new households. This expansion will allow for greater access to incredible programming offered by WCEATV Quenca Vision and reinforces the hard work and goals of its founder, Peter Quenca, and its affiliated independent producers. So on behalf of all of our colleagues here in the city council, the residents of the city of Boston, those that tune into our station as well as Quenca Vision, we offer our sincere congratulations to Quenca Vision, to Peter Quenca, and wish him the best continued success, not just him, but for his entire team, for the contributions that you've lent to the dialogue and debate between Boston, its Latino community, their elected leaders, and all people who call Boston their home. Thank you, and God bless."
Thank you, sir.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the council and the president for this great honor. And it's not only to WCEA, but to everybody that has worked with me during the last 26 years. We had the opportunity to bring an, an opportunity to all independent producers from different minority groups. And many of them have been with me for over 20 years. That is a, a way of expressing the work that we have done. Many of them are here, and I want to thank them for that work. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here. I also, being here in City Hall, I want to thank Mayor White. He was the one that gave us the opportunity to be on Cable Vision at that time. And especially to Mayor Menino. I think he's calling me from up there.
Good time.
So he, he was a mayor that, as we all know, was a great mayor to the city of Boston, and it supported my work for many, many years. And to all the councils, I know most of you, I've worked with you for many years. Today is a very special day for this honor to all of us, but also because 72 years ago was the first time that I cried. And crying means living. And many of us have forgotten that. But Quenca Vision have maintained that humanity. And that is the message that Boston have brought to many people. And that's what I'm so proud of, being part of this city. What else can I tell you? Crying is, I said, is, is living. And I wanted to send that message to the new governor. And I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but hopefully that feeling will be among us throughout the years. We want to continue the work here. We are building a new studio. We are going to another 22 communities, and we need the help of all of you. And I want to thank every one of you for the help that have given me throughout the years. Thank you very much.
Going to take a group photo if all the counselors would come forward.
Right in the well. Congratulations. Thank you. Any? Congratulations, Peter.
Thank you.
And thank you, Peter, for being here. You know, today, we recognized two very significant people in, in Boston's history as it's related to the media and the presentation and communication of all things to, to our city and state. So, thanks again. Before I go on to the agenda, I would like to recognize one other matter. Today is Counselor Michelle Wu's birthday. Happy birthday, Michelle. She had Blaze in the office today for his first sitting with the president, and it was quite enjoyable. Okay. Just remind me at that time. Yeah. Thank you. If there are no corrections to be made to the minutes of last week's meeting, they will stand approved? Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from his honor of the mayor, Madam Clerk, please.
Bucket number 0170. Message and order authorized in the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statements of interest for the accelerated repair program for the following schools: Young Achievers Science and Math, K-8, Community Academy of Science and Health, Tech Boston Academy, Ellis School, McKay K-8 School, Hurley School, and the Summer, the Summer School. The statements of interest describe and explain the deficiencies and priority, priority categorize, category for which the city of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future.
Doc at 0170 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Mean. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, would you like me to read?
Yeah, could you read doc at 0171 through 0177?
Thank you, Mr. President. Document number 0171. Communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the auditing department regarding the city of Boston's fiscal 2014 comprehensive annual financial report. Document number 0172. Communication from Counsel Frank Baker that he will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, January 14, 2015. Document number 0173. Notice was received from the mayor of the resignation of Francisco A. Urina as the Commissioner of Veteran Services. Document number 0174. Notice was received from the mayor of the absence, of his absence from the city Wednesday, January 7th, from 7:20 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Document number 0175. Notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 3, 2014. Document number 10176. Notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 10, 2014. And document number 0177. Notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 17, 2014.
Now, doc at 0171 through doc at 0177 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action, please.
Document number 0118. Message and order authorized in the mayor's office of New Urban Mechanics to accept and expend a grant not to exceed $1,350,000 from the Bloomberg philanthropies to support the creation of Boston's first innovation delivery team over periods of three years.
Our chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, Counsel Lamatina.
Well, if we had a hearing, document number 0118. At that meeting was Chris Ausgud, Nigel Jacobs, their co-chairs of the mayor's office of New Urban Mechanics, and Devin Quirk, Director of Operations of the Department of Neighbor Development, testified and gave an overview of the mission, its purpose, and the attempt of the grant. Bloomberg philanthropies provides opportunities for national and international cities to expand and create innovation teams to work and address and deliver change and more effectively to its citizens. So 12 cities in the United States got the grant, and two cities in Israel. This 1.35 million grant awarded to the city of Boston is the first of its kind. It's a three-year grant that will be used to create the Housing Innovation Lab. The Innovation Delivery Team will study and suggest proposals to help create 53,000 new houses units, housing units called for by the mayor, by Mayor Wallace, by the end of year 2030. They will be responsible for forging public and private relationships such as architects, educators, developers, and general public in the process to design data-driven programs to address the housing challenges facing our city. The grant will allow the innovation team to bring on board three and a half additional staff, including a program manager, a two-year-long fellows, and a part-time research director. They will focus on how best to tackle the issues of the anticipated population growth and the change in the need for affordable housing for the elderly and the workforce population. So half of the funds will be used for salaries, and the second half will be used for the needs of the lab. This year, this year, the city builds 4,000. This year, this year, the city builds 4,000 units of housing just this year. So, their goal will come up, their goal is to come up with solutions, strategies to build affordable housings in the city of Boston. I recommend that this measure ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. So, Councilor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0118. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0118 has passed. Madam Clerk.
Docket 0117. Message and order to accept the provisions of Section 19 of Chapter 32B within the city of Boston. A written agreement with Public Employee Committee will continue to be exclusive bargaining representative for the coalition of public employee bargaining units and retirees of the city of Boston.
Our chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Councilor Seoma.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held its hearing on Monday, January 12th. People remember four years ago, the city accepted the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 32B, Section 19, authorizing a public employee committee to negotiate health insurance for city employees and its retirees. Negotiating authority for the public employment expires on June 30, 2015. So, the mayor has sponsored this docket in order to extend its authority through June 30, 2020. David Sweeney, our CFO, Paul Curran, Director of Office of Labor Relations, Tina Wells, the Finance Director of the Office of Human Resources, and Michael Perez, Management Analyst at the Office of Budget Management, testified for the administration in support of this docket, suggesting that the city should approve an extension as soon as possible to give the commission more time to deliberate and to negotiate with providers. They actually have a tentative agreement which could realize as much as a $45 million savings over the next five years by dealing with co-pays, basic plan design, and also to put out for RFP to providers that they hope will also drive down some of the costs. Our last agreement with the Public Employee Commission produced an estimated $59 million in healthcare savings while slowing the growth of premium costs to 3.4%. The panel estimated that this $45 million cost increases in standardization of offered plans alone. The new plan could secure additional health insurance savings by making structural changes that cut costs without reducing the quality of offered care. So, at this point, they have reached a tentative agreement with the Public Employees Committee, which is made up of 10% retirees and then a representative group of labor unions. So, I'm here to recommend that we pass and give the Public Employee Commission a chance to continue the negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Seoma. Councilor Seoma moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0117. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0117 has been passed. Madam Clerk, Councilor Yancy has asked for reconsideration on matter 0171. For that to move forward, I need a second. He wants to place that matter in committee. Yep. Councilor Yancy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This communication is the audit for fiscal year 2014, which will be a part of my final report of the post-audit committee, reviewing 2004, urging each of our colleagues to take the necessary time to review that document. It does indicate a great deal of activity in private city government for fiscal year 2014. I'd like to have the matter referred to the Committee on Post-Audit and Oversight. And I believe I need a second for that.
Thank you, Councilor Yancy. We need a second to move the matter. Councilor Murphy, second. All those in favor of moving 0171, it will be assigned to the Committee on Post-Audit and Oversight. Yep. Okay. Thank you. One other matter, Madam Clerk. Did we recognize all council members that are present? Councilor Jackson came in after.
And that was the only.
Okay. Well, please recognize and record that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Our motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0178. Council McCarthy offers the following order for hearing regarding excise back collection procedure.
Chair recognizes Councilor McCarthy on docket 0178.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a refile from last year. Again, concerns that people aren't aware that they have a bill, do have a bill, and we penalize them doubly down the road. So, I gave my speech last time, so I'll just, I'll just have it at the hearing. Thanks.
Well, thank you for that, Councilor McCarthy. Docket 0178 is assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0179. Councilor Flaherty and Murphy offer the following order for hearing regarding school safety and the CorpSync 9/11 technology.
Our chair recognizes Councilor Flaherty on docket 0179.
Exciting to be at the state of the city, to hear our mayor talk about embracing technology, data-driven results, and innovation. This CorpSync 9/11 fits right into that. So, look forward to having an expedited hearing to work with our police department, our school department, and the administration to see whether or not Councilor Murphy and I and members of council can make this a reality for residents, particularly our schoolchildren who, at times of these types of situations, are our most vulnerable, along with teachers and professionals that educate our children. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're going. Councilor Murphy?
Your.
Thank you. Docket 0179 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 0180. Council Linnahan offers the following order directing the city council to examine amendments to the 2014-2015 city council rule.
Chair recognizes Councilor Bill Linnahan.
It is about looking at our rules as we approved them back in January of 2014. And the rules are for a two-year period, and therefore, any changes to that rule would, to any rules, would need a two-thirds vote of the council. So, I'm proposing here is that we have this matter assigned to rules so we have an opportunity to speak on specifically the creation of a special committee to examine the status of Black and Latino men and boys in the city of Boston. Also, to create a special committee on the 2024 Olympics. And those are two rules changed. We've also, there's never been a defined path on matters relating to tabling. We have differences of opinions, and we're not really near Robert's rules. So, we'd like to discuss and finalize when matters are tabled, that process. And so, we'll put it in a rule, and then we'll all abide by that, and that'd be the guidelines unless you ask for suspension. Also, we were unique in this last calendar year in summonzing and subpoenaing folks to the chamber. And so, that, in discussion of how that works, I thought we'd best to come up with some rules, some playbook on how we do that in the future and to have discussions on that, on that particular matter. Those are the matters that I came forth with. I'm hoping that the Rules Chair will have a mediated meeting, you know, something very quickly so that by next meeting, we'll have an ability to vote on this and to get rolling on our 2015 calendar. You know, in hindsight, I would, I probably would have included limiting the amount of matters that we can place on a docket at any one time by one counselor in one meeting. That's 28. So, but that's the sort of dialogue, you know, that's what we're talking about. And I'd ask the Chair to place it in the appropriate committee and to ask for a hearing quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I want to thank the President for offering these rules changes. As I understand, the public meeting law structure, the open meeting law structure, we have a 48-hour window. So, in 48 hours and 15 minutes, the Committee on Rules and Administration of the Boston City Council will meet to take up docket number 0180. Our staff counsel is preparing that documentation as we speak. So, it will be Friday at 1 o'clock, the Rules Committee will meet on these changes. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone involved. Chair recognizes Councilor Michael Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just rise to offer a comment in terms of the importance and the success we've had on this body with establishing special committees. Some may remember several years ago, we created the Special Committee on Pilot Reform. Previous administration had had so many years to deal with the issue around pilot, making no strides. It wasn't until this body created the Special Committee on Pilot Reform. At the time, I had appointed Councilor Murphy to chair that, and as a result of which, we had meaningful change. We had a sort of a new direction in terms of how we were going to deal with that issue, and as a result of which, it's been a windfall for the residents of the city of Boston, which in turn helped us tremendously, particularly during the tough fiscal time. So, I just want to add two cents to the real value and strength of this body creating a special committee. So, it's my hope that after hearing the rules, that we'll have a vote of the council and that two-thirds, if not all, unanimous vote that will recognize the value and strength of our role, but also how important that can be in leading debate and discussion on a very particular important issue such as the one that our colleague, Councilor Tito Jackson, has led efforts on around forming a commission around Black and Latino boys, and also the looming issue with the 2024 Olympics. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank you for your leadership in creating these two committees. I think they're both very timely. The announcement of the Olympics in the city of Boston is a great honor for the city, but it's something that has to be vetted and definitely should be vetted by this body. And I think that's very important. I also want to acknowledge that, again, as I noted when we first brought up the subject of Black and Latino men and boys in the city of Boston, we actually did that, and I want to note that we did it before the national conversation actually even began. And at that time, we spoke about this council, as we so often do, leading and not following on these issues. This special committee will give us an opportunity to do that in the city of Boston, a very pertinent issue, and also at a very pertinent time in the city, as last year, we actually had more murders in the city than we did the year before. And this morning, I went to a funeral of a young man, Mr. DeSoto, who recently lost his life in my district. This is an urgent matter. It's an urgent issue, and we not only need to deal with the issues of young men and boys, but we also need to deal with the adult issues of grown men and the issues and outcomes that they face on a regular basis. It's harder, understand, the numbers and the success rate is going to be lower by dealing with adults. But our job and the reason why people sent us here wasn't to do easy work. Our job and the reason why people sent us here was to do the difficult and hard and heavy lifting that we must do to make the city of Boston better. And I want to thank you for proposing this rules change and really looking forward to the future of the city of Boston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Yancy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I commend you for offering these rules changes, and I rise to also thank Councilor O'Malley for the initiative he took around the issue of the 2024 Olympics in the city of Boston. And I'm glad Mayor Wallace was listening. But I think it is important for us to establish that special committee, and I, again, thank you for offering. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Yancy. Docket 0180 is assigned to the Committee on Rules and Administration. Madam Clerk.
Docket 0181. Councilor Yancy offers the following order for hearing regarding emergency gas valve shut-off.
Councilor Yancy?
I'm not going to speak on every one of these 28 orders, and actually, I do have a couple late files as well for added measure for you, Mr. President. But these are, with two or three exceptions, these are refiles. And I'm sorry that Councilor Flaherty is not in the chambers right now because this issue of gas valves not being assessable in cases of emergency was initially filed by him, I believe it was 2009, maybe a little earlier. I think it is important for us to take a look at it because we discovered many instances when streets have been repaved, that they actually paved over some of these, access to these emergency gas valves. So, I'm looking forward to finalizing a hearing on that to see where we stand. And, Mr. President, if it's okay with you, I will ask the clerk to read straight through at least the titles of each of these orders. And after that's done, I'll speak on some of them selectively, since I did speak pretty extensively about these last year. Unfortunately, we were not able to get to all the items. The only items which were, which are not refiles, if I may.
Councilor Yancy, what we were going to do is read them. They were somewhat grouped, so by assignment where we would assign them. So, the first group is headed for one particular committee. So, we'll read them all, and you can comment on them.
All right. Very good. All right. Madam Clerk.
Docket 0182. Councilor Yancy offers the following ordinance amending city of Boston code, Chapter 4, Minority Women Business Enterprise. Docket number 0183. Councilor Yancy offers the following ordinance amending CBC 6-2.5 elderly property tax exemption. Docket number 0184. Councilor Yancy offers the following ordinance mandating use of automated external defibrillators in Boston police vehicles responding to 9/11 calls in the city of Boston. Docket number 0185. Councilor Yancy offers the following ordinance amending CBC Chapter 12-13 parent, paid parental leave. Docket 0186. Councilor Yancy offers the following ordinance increasing the safety of students on school buses, the seat belts on school buses. Docket number 0187. Councilor Yancy offers the following ordinance increasing safety of students on school buses, plus monitors on school buses. And docket number 0188. Councilor Yancy offers the following ordinance calling for the mandatory use of GPS technology on all emergency vehicles operating in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Prior to giving Councilor Yancy an opportunity to speak, I want to, I was remiss and did not assign 0181 to committee, and that would go to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Councilor Yancy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Very briefly, Mr. President, this body and all prior mayors have challenged the city of Boston to be equitable in terms of allocation of contracts and resources. This ordinance was created to facilitate that process. What I've offered is adjustment to some of the numbers. I know there are a lot of legal issues involved with this as well, so I'm looking forward to hopefully an expedited hearing on the effort to increase the amount of businesses that women and people of color participate with city government. The next one has to do with the ordinance concerning elderly property tax exemption. Just as a reminder, today, any senior citizen, since I'm now 66, I celebrated my birthday a couple weeks ago, I guess I'm considered an elderly taxpayer of Boston, but when I filed this, I was a young man. So, this issue of allowing our senior citizen to have their exemption automatically refiled rather than forcing them to do the paperwork year after year after year. If they miss filing of their exemption request, then they can lose thousands of thousands of dollars. If they miss filing of their exemption request, then they could lose thousands of dollars in terms of exemption. Now, the next item has to do with automatic external defibrillators in police vehicles. About four years ago, the police officer actually saved the life of an infant that was involved in a shooting. But if that police officer was not there at that time, we would have lost that little boy. That reminded me of the need to have these defibrillators on police vehicles, because very often, someone could be suffering a cardiac arrest, and the closest public safety vehicle could actually be a police vehicle. So, this would facilitate the police department's ability to actually save lives. Next item has to do with paid parental leave. In 1994, this body passed an ordinance allowing parents to take upwards of three days per year to visit their children in school during school hours without being penalized by their employer, public or private. What's proposed here is to add a benefit to city employees to allow them paid time off to participate in school activities with their children. In the past, the previous mayor did offer paid leave for parents of schoolchildren, so they, for the purpose of registering, I think it was one and a half days. This actually doubles that to three days for whatever purpose a parent has to visit a child during school hours. Next item, pretty obvious, it's a call for seat belts on school buses. We were not able to have a hearing on this last year, but I think it's somewhat ironic that the only person on a Boston Public School Bus that has access to a seat belt usually is the only adult on the bus. And we do have many cases where our children are not seated, so the whole theory of compartmentalization is hard to implement if the child is not seated and injuries result during accidents or incident. And on the average, we have an accident slash incident involving our school buses every day. Most of them, thank God, are minor, but most also result in minor injuries of our children, which would not happen if they had seat belts. Next item calls for bus monitors on school buses. Many of our children need another adult on the bus, not only for disciplinary reasons, Mr. President, but also it's a fact that some of our children have medical emergencies on buses as well. And I don't think it's fair to ask that school bus driver maintain control over sometimes 65 children without the assistance of another adult, called school bus monitors. And the next item concerning GPS technology, this has actually been implemented on most emergency vehicles on a voluntary basis, but some of our police vehicles still do not have GPS. And this ordinance would require that they already are on our body department equipment, EMS equipment, and only on a spotty basis with regards to police. And I believe those are the only ones read so far, so I will say that.
Great.
And I, excuse me, Mr. President, I invite our colleagues to sign on any of these orders as they, as they did last year. I did not want to presume that the same ones will sign on this year, so I provide this opportunity for them to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Lamatina?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take this opportunity to commend the makers and ask that my name be added to 0183, 0184, 0186, and 0187.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
83, 84, 86, and 87.
Thank you. Please add Counselor Lamatina's name to that. Counselor O'Malley.
...work and ask that my name be added to dockets number 0183, 0185, and 0187.
Could you please add Counselor O'Malley's name to those matters, please? Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Before I move on. Counselor McCarthy. No, Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to also commend Counselor Yancey for his filing of these various orders and add my name to docket 0183, 0184, and 0188. Thank you.
And, Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Murphy's name to docket 83, 84, and 88. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Presley.
Still tabulating here. Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to commend the maker and ask to have my name added to docket 0182, 0183, 0185, and 0187.
Good enough?
I have more, but I'm just not sure if I'm out of order. 0189?
We haven't done them yet.
Okay. All right. I'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be tricky. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Presley's name to 82, 83, 85, and 87. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Mr. President, where did we stop?
We stopped at 88.
Okay.
All these matters are ordinances, and they're all heading to government operations.
Yes, exactly.
So, that's why we stopped at that.
I'd like to also acknowledge the maker and add my name to 0182, 83, 86, and 87.
Madam Clerk, would you please add Counselor Jackson's name to 82, 83, 86, and 87? Counselor Flaherty.
Does that my name to 0181, 0183, 0184? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flaherty's name to 81, 83, and 84. It was the original. That matter was already assigned.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Yancey, for presenting such a great menu to choose from. Please add my name to 0182, 83, 85, and 88.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Luw's name to 82, 83, 85, 88. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank Counselor Yancey. I'd like to be added to 0183, 84, and 85. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor McCarthy's name to 83, 84, and 85. Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name to 84 and 81, or 81 and 84.
81 had already been assigned to committee, so 8, please add Counselor Siomo's name All right. So, docket 0182 to docket 0188 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, could you read? I think it would be easier for all council members if you just read the rest, and then I'll make sure I tabulate all the numbers and do the right assignments. Is that okay, Counselor Yancey?
Docket 0189. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to investigate community health center funding, racial disparities in public health, and the Boston Public Health Commission's disparities project. Docket number 0190. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to discuss poverty, unemployment, and unemployment in the City of Boston. Docket number 0191. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to discuss homelessness among African-American veterans. Docket number 0192. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing regarding racial disparities in Boston. Docket number 0193. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing regarding Boston cable television rates. Docket number 0194. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to determine what steps are being taken to identify the causes and potential remedies in reducing automobile accidents in the City of Boston. Docket number 0195. Do you want me to, you don't want me to do that?
Yeah, go through the entire list, and then Counselor Yancey can pick what matters he wants to speak on, and then I'll give an opportunity for councilors to sign on, and then I'll assign them to committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0195. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order regarding the installation of speed bumps. Docket number 0196. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to investigate means of protecting residents from SIM card fraud. Docket number 0197. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing on the locations of cab stands. Docket number 0198. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing regarding cellphone tower placement. Docket number 0199. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to review the fiscal year 2015 budget. Docket number 0200. Counselor Yancey, offer the following resolution that the City of Boston, should I skip that one, Mr. President?
Resolution?
It's a resolution.
Yes, we'll do that last.
All right, so we'll skip that. Docket number 0201. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing regarding vehicular carbon monoxide poisoning. Docket number 0202. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to examine the status of institutional expansion boards. Docket number 0203. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing regarding Boston housing authorities' trash recycling policy. Docket number 0204. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to investigate safety standards on floor sanding and refinishing trade in the City of Boston. Docket number 0205. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to discuss state of emergency regarding the HIV/AIDS epidemic in communities of color in Boston. Docket number 0206. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to discuss the resources and services available to individuals with sickle cell disease. Docket number 0207. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to investigate social services available to victims of community violence. Docket number 0208. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order for hearing to investigate the city's lack of cable-casting in Boston City Council affairs. Docket number 0209. Counselor Yancey, offer the following order, mandating placement of functioning automated external defibrillators in public buildings in Boston.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Counselor Yancey, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. There are a number of orders here looking at the issue of disparities in the City of Boston. 0189 deals with the issue of the Public Health Commission's disparity project. 0190 looks at poverty and unemployment in the, in the City of Boston, an examination of the haves and the have-nots in many respects. Homelessness among African-American veterans, 0191. Obviously, I'm concerned about homelessness involving all of our veterans, but it's been brought to my attention over the years that resources for African-American veterans have been lacking. 0192, racial disparities in Boston, deals not only with the economic disparities, but other disparities as well. 0193 has to do with the escalating cable rates in the City of Boston. I'd like to bring Comcast before this body to explain why cable rates are becoming very difficult for, for people to afford. 0194 has to do with how we're regulating our streets and decreasing the likelihood of serious automobile accidents in some sections of the City of Boston that suffers higher rates of accidents than others. 0195 deals with the controversial issue of speed bumps and related traffic calming efforts. 0196 deals with the fact that many people, when they lose their cellphones, they lose a lot of valuable information, so we want to make sure that the city's doing what it can, what it can to provide individuals with the ability to recover from loss of their cellphones, and more importantly, to recover from the information that may be in the hands of unscrupulous individuals. 0197 responds to requests from many of our constituents about the location of cab stands. Even with the advent of Uber, we still have issues involving our taxi cab stand placement. 0198 has to do with the proliferation of cellphone towers and the distributed antenna system that we have in the City of Boston, not just for aesthetic reasons, but we also want to examine the health implications of proximity to many of these cell towers. 0199 is a new order for hearings looking at the current fiscal year. And 01, or we did not deal with the resolution concerning Martin Luther King Jr., but we'll come back to that. 0201 has to do with problem that we face literally during every major snowstorm, where we have some of our residents suffering injury or worse because the carbon monoxide built up in one's vehicle. And we just want to make sure that we alert the public to those risks, particularly when we have major blizzards in the City of Boston. And 021, 0202, Institutional Expansion Board. We have many hospitals and other institutions, including universities, that are expanding. We want to make sure that the Institutional Expansion Board is operating and sensitive to the needs of the residents of Boston. 0203 has to do with recycling of Public Housing Authority. 0204 deals with the problem that we suffered many years ago when fires were actually started, and health issues impacted workers sanding floors and refinishing wood in the City of Boston. 0205 is a reexamination of the state of emergency initiated and passed by this body. We're going to take a review of how effective that program is. 0206 has to do with the fact that many people suffering from sickle cell disease, facing additional obstacles because of a lack of sensitivity on the part of many individuals in the public, particularly with regards to our schools. Temperature in a room can be a trigger for a major episode on the part of individuals suffering from sickle cell disease, for example. 0207 is a rehearing concerning services available to victims of violence. 0208 has to do with the fact that even today, if working people work nine-to-five jobs, they cannot view these cable, view the City Council on cable unless they go online. So, we want to correct that this year. 0209, automatic external defibrillators in public buildings, very self-explanatory. And I will stop there, Mr. President, until you continue with Dr. King's remarks.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. So, prior to giving folks an opportunity to sign on, I thought I'd go through the roll call and ask folks if they wanted to sign on, and they could give me the numbers. It would be easier for the clerk to execute recording this, okay? So, Counselor Siomo, would you like to sign on to any of those matters? 2002?
Oh, we didn't do 02, because that's the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right. We're going to do that...
0193.
We're going to do that next, okay? The resolution.
Okay.
Are you good with 93 and 00?
Yeah.
Okay. So, please add Counselor Siomo's named, name to 93 and 00. Counselor Flaherty. We haven't done 00?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Counselor Siomo gets... Okay, so Counsel Lusiano gets 193. Counsel of Flaherty?
Did we do docket 0200?
No.
Okay. I'll hold it this time.
Thank you. Counsel Jackson?
0193, 0195, and we didn't do 200 yet, right?
Right. Please add Counsel Jackson's name to 91, 92, and 95. Counsel La Matina?
0203. Did we do that yet? Sorry. Did we do that?
I have it. Counsel La Matina would add his name to 93, 95, and 03. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could add me to 0193, 0195, and 0207. Thank you.
Please add Counsel McCarthy's name to 93, 95, and 07. Counsel Murphy?
Mr. President, could you please add my name to dockets 0193, 0196, 0197, 0198, 0202, 0207?
Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Murphy's names to 93, 96, 97, 98, 02, and 07. Counsel O'Malley?
Could I then make a brief comment on one of them?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Please add my name to dockets 0193, 0194, 0195, 0203, and 0207.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you. And just, and I appreciate particularly 0195, this is regarding speed bumps. I had a similar hearing order on looking at new traffic calming measures, and rather than refiling it, I'd just like to add my name to this and ask the sponsor if we could include some other ways that we can look at controlling speed. Some speed bumps don't work in all neighborhoods or in some streets, so I think it's an opportunity to really embrace new technology and innovation to help with speeding our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Please add Counsel O'Malley's name to 93, 94, 95, 03, and 07. Counsel Pressley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name to dockets 0193, 0195, 0189. Sorry, that's out of order. 0200, we haven't read yet, right?
Yeah, we'll do that resolution next.
Okay, so we'll wait on that.
Thank you, Counsel Pressley. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Pressley's name to 93, 95, 01, 02, 03, 05, 06, 07. Thank you, Counsel Pressley. Counsel Wu?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name to matter 0191, 93, 97, 02, 03, 04, and 07.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Wu's name to matter 91, 93, 97, 02, 03, 04, and 07. Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Zakim? Thank you, Counsel Zakim. Please add Counsel Zakim's name to matter 97. I see some flashing lights. Counsel La Matina, do you?
I'm sorry, can you please just add my name to 0207? I know there's so many of them and it just gets a little confusing.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure I get it right, okay? So please add Counsel La Matina's name to 07. Thank you. Counsel Pressley?
Oh, yes, please add my name to... I couldn't read my writing previously. 0191.
Okay. Add Counsel Pressley's name to 91, please. And Counsel Jackson?
I'd like to have my name added to 06, 07, 08.
Please add Counsel Jackson's name to 06, 07, and 08. I see no lights flashing. I think we've accomplished our task. And so at this time, I will read that. The last one I read was 88. So docket 0189 is assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. Docket 0190 is assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Labor. 0191 is assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. 0192 is assigned to the Committee on Human Rights and Civil Rights. Docket 0193 is assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Docket 0194 is assigned to the Committee on Public Safety. 0195 is assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. 0196 is assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. 96... 9... Also place 0197 and 0198 in the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Docket 0199 is assigned to the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Docket 001... 0201 is assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks. Docket 0202 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Docket 0203 is assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks. Docket 0204 is assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor. Docket 0205 through 0207 is assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. Docket 0208 is assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. And docket 0209 is assigned to the Committee on Public Safety. Madam Clerk, would you read docket 0200?
Docket number 0200, Counsel Yancey offered the following resolution that the city of Boston contributes financial support for the erection of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s monument in Boston.
Counsel Yancey, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. President, back in 1999, this matter was actually passed by the Boston City Council. Twelve of the 13 members of this body signed on. I believe Counsel Kelly was present at the time, and he signed on as well. This is somewhat different because the first resolution did not call for any financial contribution. Since that time, we've erected a statue in honor of Bill Russell. We have the likeness of former Mayor John Collins gracing City Hall Plaza thanks to the initiative of Counsel Murphy. But we haven't done anything yet to honor Dr. King. While there's broad-based support for this effort, I believe that this matter should actually be placed in committee for a hearing, although I welcome everyone signing on. I want to invite the administration to discuss this issue. But ultimately, I want each and every one of us to be reminded of the values that Dr. King stood for and for which he died every day we come to City Hall. So we have actually identified two possible locations in the past, neither which has yet to be implemented. And hopefully, with the new administration, with new energy here on the Boston City Council, it can get done this year. So I ask that this matter not be suspended and passed, but I do invite all members of this body to sign on, and that it be referred to the appropriate committee.
Okay. So Counsel Yancey has requested that this matter be assigned to committee. There's no lights flashing, so... No. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor. Counsel O'Malley, please add Counsel O'Malley's name, Counsel Lusiano's name, Counsel of Flaherty's name, Counsel of Jackson's name, Counsel La Matina, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Pressley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zakim, and the chair.
Thank you.
This will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. All right. Madam Clerk, I don't know how your records are, but we are at matter 0210.
Docket number 021... No. 021... 10. I'm sorry.
Yes, 10.
Excuse me. Very sorry, Mr. President. Docket number 0210, Counsel Jackson offered the following order for hearing to discuss displacement, community stability, and neighborhood preservation.
Chair recognizes Counsel Jackson.
Well, we brought City Willsy and others in. We plan on doing a series of hearings to deal with a very important issue in the city of Boston. That's the issue of displacement and gentrification, which is something that is happening all over the city of Boston. It's not merely in Roxbury, Dorchester, Mattapan, and it's probably in your district, Mr. President, probably happening the fastest. And so it's a citywide issue. And as we have this issue about bringing a global event to the city of Boston, we want to ensure that we're all actually able to be here. And so dealing with this issue of housing prices is one that's very important, and in particular, the issues and upward pressure on the middle class in the city of Boston of people who actually don't get any subsidy at all. Those are the people who have actually some of the most difficult times. And in addition, when it comes to what the subsidized housing now provides with the voucher with the... I have 225 Center Street, which is in Counsel O'Malley's district, right across from mine. It's $2,000 a month for a one-bedroom. And so that has really increased the upward pressure and displacement in the district. And so I think there's a lot to be said, and we want to unpack it more. So that's why I put it forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Zakim?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counsel Jackson on bringing this matter forward again for his leadership on this issue. It's something, as he mentioned, so important in all of our neighborhoods, the pressure on middle-class, working-class housing options in the city, particularly in the neighborhoods I represent, Fenway and Mission Hill. We see this over and over again every day. I'm heading to a community meeting tonight on this very topic, and I just think it's very timely and important, especially in the broader context of planning for the next few years, decades, generation of Bostonians. So please add my name to this. I look forward to the hearing.
Yep. Thank you, Counsel Zakim. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Zakim's name to this matter. Counsel La Matina, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Pressley, Counsel Wu, please add the chair's name. Counselor Yancey?
Thank you very much. Very briefly, I want to commend the maker of this hearing order. In my district, Mr. President, we've added police stations, we've added community centers, we've added libraries. We're revitalizing the Fairmont Line, and all those infrastructure improvements only serve to drive up the values of housing in the community, and many long-term residents find it difficult to continue to remain in the city of Boston. So I think this is a very timely hearing, and we'd like to have my name added. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Counsel La Matina, your light is flashing. Did you want to speak on the matter?
You know, the city of Boston, they're taking those apartments off the housing stock. Just in my district, 165 units that I'm aware of are part of Airbnb. And just letting the council know that there's a hearing on the 26th at the Boston Public Library, properly that the mayor is sponsoring. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel La Matina. You've added Counsel La Matina's name. Please add Counsel Yancey's name. And Counsel Murphy? And please add Counsel Murphy's name. Docket 0210 is assigned to the Committee on Housing. Madam Clerk? 0211.
Docket 0211, Counsel Jackson offered the following order for hearing to discuss diversity in post-secondary institutions.
Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
President, this is also a refile. I want to really thank my colleagues who came out and attended, in particular Counsel Zakim as well as McCarthy, because the day before, we had just landed from a trip to Israel. And so for them to actually attend the hearing that we had with Boston University was something I want to thank them for, as well as all of the others who actually attended that. We, as a city, are a changing city. We're over 53% people of color. We want to make sure that our colleges and universities are including folks. And we also want to make sure that our anchor institutions, which many of the people in this room have done a lot of work on, are actually giving us a triple... a several-fold bottom line. And one of the ways that we look at that is how much are they buying from people in the city of Boston? How much are they buying from minority-owned businesses? How much are they buying from women-owned businesses? One of the things that we heard Dr. Brown let us know is that Boston University has a $100 million operating revenue on an annual basis, $100 million. Yet, it is the third-largest employer in the city of Boston, and sadly, they only have 3% African-American students at their school. They rank 14 out of 15 when it comes to the schools that they rank themselves against. And in the region, they actually are the least diverse in terms of their faculty. And that number isn't from me, it's actually from their faculty senate. So these are amenities that are in and around our community. They take up, and as Counsel Murphy actually noted at one point, over 51% of the landmass in the city of Boston is actually in the hands of nonprofits. If we're going to have that, we want to make sure that these amenities actually pay us back in terms of actually helping our economy. We have an opportunity to look at this, and it's going to be a series of hearings. I'm not picking on anyone. I know I've been pointed at about picking on someone. I definitely believe in anti-bullying, and I'm not trying to bully anyone. I'm just simply wanting people to do the right thing. I want colleges and universities to think about that. And so this will be a series of hearings where we bring all of our colleges and universities in. It's actually at the discovery stage, and then we will decide in terms of moving forward with our policy, really, how do we look at this? Only seven schools paid into pilot last year. Well, actually, that's a declining number versus an incline in terms of what we need. So we should really look at how we can not only look at the pilot side of things, which, again, a great deal of work has happened here, but we also should look at additional benefit. How many scholarships are going to Boston Public School students, as well as how many opportunities relative to people who are actually working at those colleges and universities? And I remind us, Boston University is double the size of... And I remind us, Boston University is double the size of Fidelity in the city of Boston. When we think of the city in many ways around the financial and banking side, it's the third-largest employer. So we really need to look at that, as well as all of the other colleges and universities. And so, again, this will be a series of hearings. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket 0111 is assigned to the Committee on Education. Madam Clerk? Your button wasn't pressed, huh? Counselor Yancey?
I'd simply like to sign on to the order.
All right. Please add Counselor Yancey's name to docket 0211. And Counselor Presley and Counselor Wu, could you please add them to that matter? Counselor Flaherty, could you add them to docket 0211?
Great. Thank you.
0212.
Docket number 0212, Counselor Jackson, offer the following order for hearing to discuss entrepreneurship and residence programs in the city of Boston.
Counselor Jackson?
This is also a refile. I'll be brief. We didn't get an opportunity to do this hearing last year, but several cities, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Portland, and New York, have adopted this model. I think it's the interesting aspect of this model is that many venture capital firms, private equity firms, actually have an entrepreneur and residence, and they use that person to guide some of the investments. We have a $2.8 billion budget. We have a several hundred million dollar budget relative to our capital budget. And so it would be really great to invite members of the entrepreneurial community here in the city of Boston, just as we have a poet laureate to guide us in terms of our creative thoughts. This could be an opportunity to have an entrepreneur who has been hands-on, on the ground relative to business investment, to continue to guide us. And so that's the idea, and I look forward to an expedited hearing on this. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket 0212 is assigned to the Committee on... No, no, I'm not having a problem. Counselor Wu?
Just wanted to add my name.
Counselor Wu would like to have her name added to that matter? Anybody else? Okay. I tried to refrain from saying that to put anybody on the spot, so the lights are important. Thank you. Docket 0212 is assigned to the Committee on Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation. Madam Clerk, personnel audit. Okay. We're moving for substitution on docket 0213. We need a language change, right? Everybody has it? Any... Do we need a second? We move a second. So we have moved for substitution. All those in favor for the substitution? Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the substituted matter?
On January 14, 2015, Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor Murphy ordered that effective January 31, 2015, the following person be added.
Counselor Murphy moves... Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
This is the final hire of the central staff changes that you have instituted over the course of your presidency. And the council's Committee on Rules met last Friday and interviewed Corinne Walsh, who was one of 87 people who had applied for the chief researcher's job, which we promoted Juan Lopez to the chief researcher. And consequently, Juan Lopez's position of senior legislative assistant and budget analyst for the city council opened up on that promotion. And rather than reopen the doors, we had such a high quality of, and a high caliber of 87 applicants, we reopened it to the other finalists. One of the finalists withdrew, two others had gotten other jobs, and Corinne Walsh, who works for the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services currently, was the unanimous choice of all five members of the council's Rules Committee to go forward. And the reason we had substitute language is to change the title and to change the date of her appointment to January 31, so that she could give adequate notice to M-O-N-S of her departure and her joining here. She is an attorney by trade and highly qualified individual, a lifelong East Boston resident. And I think all of my colleagues will be as impressed as the Rules Committee was with her upon meeting her and getting her working here in the city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. And I want to take this time to thank you for your continued efforts as chairing rules in moving the central staff reorganization to its finality at this time. So at this time, I will... Counselor Murphy, move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0213. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0213 has been passed. Madam Clerk, late file. There are four late-file matters in the hands of the clerk, and in the absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the first late-file matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. January 14, 2015, Counselor Bill Linnahan offered the following order that effective January 14, 2015, the following named person will hereby be appointed... This is personnel. Record?
Yes, please.
Order by Counselors Bill Linnahan and Stephen J. Murphy from the city of Boston, home rule petition. Whereas the city of Boston has one of the highest costs of living in any city of the country, as well as the most expensive real estate market... Would you like me to read first and last? Therefore be it ordered that a petition to the general court, accompanied by a bill for a special law relating to the city of Boston, be filed with an attested copy of this order, be and hereby is approved by clause 1 of section 8 of article 2, as amended of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows, except for clerical or editorial changes of form only.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Chair recognizes counsel President Linnahan.
And thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to ask for suspension of the rule to add Counselor Seomo. His name was originally on this docket. This is the third time that this docket will be, if voted upon, will be sent up to the House. Before I talk on it, I would like to... A second?
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Docket...
Counselor Seomo is so added, I guess. Okay. So long-term homeowners tax deferral. This is the third time that we've prepared a home rule petition to be sent up to the state legislature regarding this matter. This matter is a really significant, important matter that all of you have either dealt with, but most of you have already voted on. The reason we have to do this again is because we're in a new session up at the State House. And then the technical team up at Revenue thought that there could be some language changes to assist us in moving it quickly. We... So basically, the long-term homeowners tax deferral is intended to provide relief to those Boston homeowners age 55 and over who are having difficulty affording their real estate tax liability. In light of the reassessments that have just come out, I know that personally, my assessment per quarter has increased $200. And in some of other neighborhoods, they're even more dramatic than that. And so for those who are on fixed incomes, who are real estate wealthy but cash restricted... They need something like this. And not to read the entire thing, but this gives folks an opportunity for them to defer the tax payment. And there's a formula here so that if there is a significant increase in the assessment, they can defer that tax payment until the final disposition of that property. So whether it gets sold or it gets bequeathed, then at that time, the due tax would be paid. And this would allow people not to have to decide on whether they pay their taxes and talk about whether they pay for their prescription, whether they put themselves in some sort of lien on the city, by the city, for not paying their taxes, and that they've, to them, this is just their home, where they plan to live for as long as they like, and allows them to defer that tax. And I was sure that if we finally get this passed up at the State House and this whole move moves forward, that this would be something that would be coveted by many of the city's residents, especially those that find themselves in the situation that I presented. So we voted for this before. Mayor has signed it. This has happened twice. We feel very strongly that this would be the third time that this occur. I ask each of you to support this so that we can move this over to the mayor for signature and then get it back up to the House in this session. Thank you very much.
Please add the name of Counselor Flaherty. Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I want to thank the president for refiling this. I was a co-sponsor on the last two times. And I think it's a couple of things we need to do. One is, we need to move this as quickly as possible, because it was a year ago that we moved it, and then just a couple of weeks ago, the same people we were trying to protect with this got hit with a double barrel of new assessments. And there's a lot of outrage out in several communities of the city, and it's against us, and we did our best to move this forward. And having worked in the Senate President's office back in the 1980s, I can tell you that there's a new crew up at the legislature. We never tinkered with any language that came up from any municipality. And last year, we sent up... We have a good staff attorney here, and she, in fashioning this language, gave her best efforts to us. We sent it up to the House of Representatives immediately at Ways and Means to be stopped by some attorney who said that our language could cause problems. So they delayed it, delayed it, killed it. Now we send up a second one, based on the House Attorney's ruling, and another committee attorney, not Ways and Means, this time Revenue, says that the language that we submitted that was given to us by House Ways and Means is not good language. So Revenue kills it. And would have said that the first language that the city council had drafted would have worked. So we need to hold a meeting with the House Counsel down here to tell them to stop screwing around with the language that we send up there, number one. And number two, we need to get this thing done for people here. And I'm looking for a hearing, maybe not on this, because, you know, we're supposed to reassess every third year, and this is the second year in a row that people have had their property reassessed, which I believe is a violation of the state law on reassessment. And the other thing is, we need to cap the value of the assessment. Because some of these assessments are coming in at 30 and 35, and 40% of what a person's assessed value is, it's going to go up 40% in a year. It should be capped at 10%. As the president said, there are people who are cash restricted but property-rich. And these are the people that are living on fixed incomes that can't help it if a developer is going to develop luxury condos in the block that they live in. But they're the ones who are getting penalized for living in that block, and they need to be protected. We need to do it. And I agree with the president. We should probably move as quickly as possible on this, send this to the mayor, and send a message to House Counsel to get their act together and stop screwing around with our stuff down here. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley.
Just please add my name, Mr. Chair.
Please add the name of Counselor O'Malley. And Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Presley, Wu, Counselor Yancey, and Zachem. Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linnahan.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just move for suspension and passage of this matter.
Second.
So move. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Refreece.
Could you read the second late-file matter? Is that a personnel matter? Okay.
In the city council, offered by Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor O'Malley, ordered that effective Wednesday...
Counselor O'Malley moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The second late-file matter has been passed.
Mr. President, would you like to read?
Can you do first and last?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the city council, order of Counselor Charles Yancey, order that having convened an in-open meeting on, which is blank, 2015, the city council of Boston, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest forms on or before April 10, 2015, for the following school, Mattapan High School, new (in parentheses) Old State Hospital. And the last paragraph reads, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment for the Massachusetts School Building Authority commits to the city of Boston School District to filing an application for funding with Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Counselor Yancey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, when this party first passed the loan order for the high school on the grounds of Boston State Hospital, the price tag was $60 million. At that time, the state would have reimbursed the city of Boston 90%, so it would have cost the city only $6 million to build. Today, as everyone here knows, the price tag for the same facility is $120 million. And the reimbursement rate is significantly less than the 90% it would have been in the year 2000. The purpose of this Statement of Interest is to have it filed the same time as the other Statement of Interest would be filed that was submitted by the administration earlier in this session. So I'm asking that the chair of the appropriate committee consider this matter for a Statement of Interest and... matter for a statement of interest, and work, uh, with the school, uh, department and the administration, uh, to get their, uh, support for the statement of interest. Were we to pass the loan order, as, uh, currently sits on, on the table, um, the cost to the, uh, City of Boston will be $120 million, that will be financed over a certain period of time. If, however, the School Building Authority, uh, decides to, uh, support the financing of this high school, uh, then, uh, we'll be on entirely different arrangement. Uh, it's possible that the, uh, payments would be made periodically, uh, by the state, uh, and we'll achieve the same end. So this is not mutually exclusive to the loan order, but that this does at least bring us to the attention of the School Building Authority, uh, by supporting the statement of interest. So I ask that this matter be considered with the other administration requests for a statement of interest, and invite any of our colleagues to sign on at this time as well. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Yancey. That matter will be, um, placed in the Committee on Ways and Means. Uh, the next late file matter, Madam Clerk.
Offered by Councilors Michael Flaherty and Stephen J. Murphy, in the City of Boston, Home Rule Petition, an act to restore Boston's governmentally-involved housing protection.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was asked on behalf of, uh, housing advocates, um, to refile this. This is not new to the City Council. Uh, this is a home rule petition that has consistently been before this body, dating back to 1994. It's enjoyed, uh, arguably, probably almost all the time. It's enjoyed unanimous support. And it was always signed by the previous administration, sent up to Beacon Hill, uh, but, uh, never really saw, uh, saw passage or the light of day. So, uh, in sum, it's, um, it's a home rule petition that, if passed, would allow Boston to preserve and restore at-risk affordable housing at no cost to the city. Uh, it applies to current and former HUD subsidized housing with expiring use restrictions. Uh, if passed, Boston could require owners to extend, uh, those expiring HUD contracts, uh, that are forcing them to pay market rents, and, uh, keep units affordable to lower-income elderly and families across the city. Uh, this home rule petition would give the city at no cost tool to save these homes. Uh, and a couple examples for, for us, uh, High Point Village in Rosendale, uh, and, uh, Bay Towers in our, in our neighborhood of South Boston. So, um, our hope is to, uh, have an expedited hearing for our housing activists, uh, get this passed before the Council, get it over to the mayor's office, uh, for a signature, and get it back up to Beacon Hill to catch on, uh, to, uh, the home rule calendar and, uh, and track up there, and hopefully get it passed. So, um, uh, this also, um, working with Counselor Murphy, uh, who was the, one of the lead sponsors in the past, along with our former colleague, Counselor Consavo, appears in almost every chair of housing, you know, Counselor Yancey was involved, Counselor, former Counsel Feeney was involved actively in this. So, again, this is an annual, uh, that comes up every legislative session where they're asking us to put our best foot forward again. It's unchanged. This home rule petition has been the same format since 1994. So, our hope is to get a quick hearing, get a vote, and get it up there as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Murphy.
I want to thank, uh, Counselor Flaherty for sponsoring this with me. It, it is, as he said, uh, a refile, I guess, because we filed it, uh, for all of the, um, 19 years I've been on this body, and, uh, for some reason, Beacon Hill does not, uh, take action on this particular home rule petition. We're hoping maybe this would, uh, change at this point in time. Uh, sometimes you keep filing things, or refiling things, and they happen. Last night, I was at Symphony Hall with everybody else, and the mayor announced 311, something that Counselor Brian Honan and I co-sponsored in 1998, here in the City Council, finally coming to the city. So, if you keep refiling it, sometimes you get what you want, and I'm hoping for the best on this particular home rule petition.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Uh, please add Counselor O'Malley's name, Counselor Ciomo's name, Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor Presley's name, Counselor Wu's name, Counselor Yancey's name, and please add my name. That matter will be placed in the Committee, oh, Counselor McCarthy, you'd like to speak on the matter?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Councilors, uh, Murphy and Flaherty. I think, um, everybody here is, uh, is in agreement, and we're looking for, um, to expedite this, to get this up as fast as we, we can. Um, I would like to make a motion to suspend and pass.
Um, Counselor McCarthy, moves suspension and passage of the third late file matter?
Fourth.
Fourth. Of the fourth late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The fourth late file matter has been passed. At this time, is, uh, there anybody who would like to pull something from the green sheet? Counselor Yancey, could you approach, please? Anybody wishing to, uh, pull a matter from the green sheets? Uh, seeing, hearing, and no takers on this matter, then we will move to the consent agenda. There are 14 late file matters, am I correct? Oh, no, we do the consent agenda. There are 14 late file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Any objection? All right. Counselor Yancey has asked that he have the opportunity to read a matter in the, cuts out consent. This is Counselor Yancey's name, please.
Yes.
Nice, Russ. Yeah, I, so, Counselor Yancey, you have the floor for the 14th late file matter on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, uh, as you know, as part of our tradition in the, uh, City Council, uh, we're going to recognize an individual who spent a lot of time within the City of Boston, a person who met his wife in the City of Boston, a person who celebrated all around the world. Of course, I'm referring to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who I had the opportunity to meet and shake his hand back in 1965. Uh, so, what I would like to have happen today, Mr. President, with your permission, is to have the clerk read the, uh, resolution, uh, honoring, uh, Dr. King in its entirety. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, would you read that matter in its entirety, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the City Council, Boston City Councilor Charles Yancey honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia, on January 15th, 1929, to Alberta Williams King and Reverend Martin Luther King Sr. And whereas, sorry, whereas Dr. King received his Bachelor of Bachelors degree in sociology from Warhouse College in 1948, and he received his Bachelor of Divinity degree from Crowes Theological Seminary in Upland, Pennsylvania in 1951. Whereas Dr. King met Coretta Scott in Boston, who married her on June 18th, 1953, and received his PhD in schematic theology, systematic theology, excuse me, from Boston University on January, June 5th, 1955. Whereas Dr. King on December 4th, 1955, was elected President of the Mon, Montgomery Improvement Association, which oversaw the boycotts back after Ms. Mrs. Rosa Park was arrested for refusing to give up her seat for a white passenger. And whereas on August 28th, 1963, after meeting President John F. Kennedy, Dr. King delivered the "I Have a Dream" speech on the steps of Lincoln Memorial to a crowd of 250,000. And whereas Dr. King was present at the White House while President Lyndon B. Johnson signed the Public Accommodations and Fair Employment Section to the Civil Rights Act of 1964 on July 2nd, 1964. And whereas Dr. King received the Nobel Peace Prize in Oslo, Norway, on December 10th, 1964. And whereas Dr. King came out against our government's policy in Vietnam on May 16th, 1966, and went to Memphis, Tennessee, to lead a march in support of striking sanitation workers, uh, on April 3rd, 1963, where he delivered his "I've Been to the Mountaintop" speech at the Mason Temple in the National Headquarters of the Church of God and Christ. And whereas Dr. King's life was at, was ended on April 4th, 1968, by his, an assassin's bullet while he stood on the balcony of the Lorraine Motel in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas on August 27th, 1984, following an act of the 98th Congress of the United States of America, President Ronald Reagan signed into law the creation of the Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday Commission. Be it therefore resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled does remember the dreams of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and supports the philosophical quest for racial equality and economic justice that he, he proposed. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled does he have to declare January 15th, 2015, as the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Day in the City of Boston, signed by President of the City Council, Bill Linnahan, and offered by Counselor Charles Yancey.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Presley, your buttons pressed, is that for after this? Yeah, I assume. Uh, the Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the consent agenda has been adopted. Counselor Presley, uh, for what purpose do you rise?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, unanimous consent, just to make a statement.
No objections, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Um, if you'll indulge me, I may go over the time, but I'll try to be respectful, given this has already been a-
Take all the time you want.
A lengthy meeting. Um, but I did want to just take a moment to pay tribute, um, to a proud Dorchester Democrat and a progressive warrior, Marie Marshall, uh, who we lost two days ago. Um, it is very hard to believe that those piercing blue eyes of hers are permanently at rest, um, but she labored hard, uh, for her beloved Dorchester, uh, for progressive politics, and for many of us on this body, and, uh, it is time now that she sleep. Um, walking into the state of the city last night, um, and especially when there were Dorchester mentions throughout the mayor's, uh, remarks, I have, uh, no doubt in my mind that Marie would have been there last night, and she would have been, uh, cheering, uh, the loudest. Um, I did want to just read, um, a poem, um, but before I do that, I, I spoke briefly about her activism, which is how many would define her, but as tough as she was, as outspoken as she was, uh, she was also just as gentle and as loving, and, uh, I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to just acknowledge that I know her proudest honor was that of being a mother, uh, and a grandmother as well. I wanted to read a poem, it's one of my favorites, and it reminds me of, uh, Marie, and it's Marge Piercey's "To Be of Use." Um, I won't read the entire part, uh, just a couple of excerpts that I believe are befitting. "To be of use. The people I love the best jump into work headfirst. They don't dally in the shallows, they swim off with sure strokes, almost out of sight. They seem to become natives of that element. I love people who harness themselves like an ox to a heavy cart, who pull like water buffalo with massive patience, who strain in the mud and the muck to move things forward, and who do what has to be done, again and again. The work of the world is as common as mud. The pitcher cries for water to carry, and a person for work that is real." Rest in peace, Marie.
Very nice, thank you, thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Jackson, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement.
No objections, you have the floor.
Um, Mr. President, I also rise to pay tribute, uh, to a friend. Um, I'm, she was stubborn as hell, um, she, uh, was loud, and she will be missed at every single one of my turkey fry, uh, which was, uh, the worst, uh, fundraising event that I've ever thrown, other than when she sat at the front door. Uh, it's, it's actually the only time that we actually ever made a profit, uh, at that event. Um, she was always the first to get there, um, and every single partisan campaign I've ever worked on, uh, she was a part of. Uh, she showed that an individual who cares about their neighborhood, and simply cares about people, can change the world. Um, every single call that I received from her, uh, to my cellphone or to my office, was for someone else. She never, ever called me to ask for anything for herself. Um, someone who fought, and I, and ironically, uh, this is her, I don't know if it's her third or fourth bout, uh, with cancer, um, and she just, she fought it. Uh, she was given, I believe, 10 days, uh, this summer, and I told her, uh, she was just too damn stubborn to go in 10 days. Uh, and, um, heaven has definitely gained another angel. Um, she is, uh, there probably, uh, agitating for, uh, the, the best of for, uh, anyone who's up there. Uh, she will be missed, uh, but I, I'm also, uh, heartened by how strong her family has been throughout this whole, uh, time, and also that she, uh, can rest and be comfortable, uh, because it has been a very long road, uh, for her. Uh, we are all better, uh, individually, as well as a city, uh, having known, uh, Marie Marshall. Uh, we miss her, uh, we love her, uh, but she will definitely live on in the work, uh, that we do. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Jackson. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise, as the Council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individual. On behalf of the entire Council, uh, Marie Marshall from Dorchester, Counselor Ciomo, Paul X. Flaherty Jr., Rogerah E. Robinson, for Counselor Ciomo and Counselor Murphy, Kevin Long, for the Chair, and Counselor Flaherty, Richard O'Brien, for Counselor Lamatina, Patricia Hardy, Louise Lundee, Helle Pino, Josephine Nelson, Salipa Fizi- Alipa Fisi, and Mary Pagliuca. For Counselor Murphy, Francis Bellotti Jr. And Gregory Murphy. For Counselor O'Malley, Mathias T. O'Malley, and that's uncle. And Stella Caspari. For Counselor Presley, Delta Grant, and Charles Turner. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the Council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, January 28, 2015, at 12 o'clock noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the Council is so adjourned.